Good evening. The June 23, 2015 meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I'm requesting everyone in the audience to please turn off your electronic devices or put them on vibrate. Later in the meeting, up to 30 minutes will be provided for individuals wishing to address the board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County school system or the school board only. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding a regular agenda item or matters on which the board customarily takes action, you must first complete a peach form located on the front table. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or student discipline matter, please complete a lime green form. These forms must be fully completed and received by the board secretary no later than 5:40 PM. Procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Madam Secretary, would you please call the board?
Mr. Bobby James, District 3.
Here.
Mrs. Kelly King, District 5.
Here.
Ms. Nancy Stacy, District 1.
Here.
Mrs. Carol Ely, District 2.
Present.
Ms. Angie Boynton, District 4.
Here.
Mr. Stephen Lake, Board Attorney.
Here.
Mr. George Tomlin, Superintendent.
Here.
Mr. Kathy Christian, Public Relations Officer and TV Media Productions Coordinator, please introduce the students who will be assisting you in providing the inspiration and leading us in the pledge this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This evening, these students are the inspiration. They're not just assisting, they are the inspiration. I am proud to present three of five students, recent graduates of the class of 2015 of Marion County Public Schools, who, for those of you who are former educators and former business owners or current business owners, I would think you would want these folks among your workforce. Why? Because out of 2,340 days of school, they were present, 2,340 days of school. These students never, never missed a single day of school. Now, if you do the math, you'll discover that there should actually be two more days of school in that number, but thanks to the hurricanes in 2004, that school year was 178 days, but I'm confident that all of these students would have been in class those other two days if Mother Nature had not tormented us like she did. But I would like to ask each of the three students who are with us tonight to come forward. As I introduce them, I'll share a little bit of information about them, and students, I'll ask you, as you come up, you just come in the circle here and face out that way, because as uncomfortable as you are with it, we want to feature you on television as much as we possibly can. And this is our only chance, since you already have your diploma. First up and foremost, Chandler Cook, he graduated from Forest High School. In 2002, he started as a kindergarten student at Dr. N.H. Jones Elementary and advanced to Howard Middle School, and he is 18 years old and the son of Carrie and Donna Cook here of Ocala. Dylan Ford is not with us this evening because, as I understand it, he is already off to the military. Nevertheless, he graduated from Vanguard High School. Also in 2002, he enrolled in Marion County as a kindergarten student at Dr. N.H. Jones Elementary and attended Howard Middle School. He is the 18-year-old son of Edward and Brenda Ford, also of Ocala. Misty Griffin, unfortunately, is also not with us this evening. She graduated from the North Side with North Side Pride at North Marion High School. She enrolled in 2002 as a kindergarten student at Fort McCoy School and completed 8th grade before advancing to North Marion High School. She's 18 years old and the daughter of Vandal Griffin and Leslie Corson of Fort McCoy. Lisa McLean graduated from Vanguard High School. She enrolled at Madison Street Academy. You want to guess which year? 2002, as a kindergarten student, and she advanced to Howard Middle School. She is 18 years old and the daughter of Roy and Jennifer McLean of Ocala. And finally, we have Ms. Phyllis Ross, who graduated also from Vanguard High School in 2002. Like her colleagues up here, she enrolled in kindergarten at Dr. N.H. Jones Elementary and continued through the 8th grade at Howard Middle School. She is the 18-year-old daughter of Nathaniel and Rosa Ross of Ocala. Now, while I recognize these students for the incredible accomplishment that you guys have made, and you may not even realize how incredible it is just yet, I also want to especially recognize the parents, because I'm sure there were days where Mom and Dad said, "I don't really think you should go to school today," and they actually went anyway. Is that right, parents? Yes, they laugh, and yes, okay. Well, you've done well. Thank you for your commitment to your children's educations and for being active in that. And students, I want to present to you, I'll read this to you, and then hand each of you your certificate. I'd like to present this certificate on behalf of the superintendent and the board to each of you. It reads, "For outstanding dedication to education, the Marion County School Board proudly recognizes," and then each of your names and where you graduated, "throughout your entire public school career, you never missed a day of class attending Marion County Public Schools. Thank you for your perseverance, which has certainly contributed in a real way to your success and that of Marion County Public Schools." And of course, each of our board members and our superintendent has signed it today, the 23rd day of June. So I say congratulations to each of you. Let me give you this certificate, and then I'm sure our board members will want to recognize you as well, so I'll ask you to come over here where I am in just a moment. Mr. Chandler? There's yours. You guys will follow me over here. Board, I can't say anything better than these would be the perfect model students to never miss a day of school. And I know that they represent us well in their chosen colleges and careers, and as well, I think any employer would, I don't want to say pay double, but they might pay double to have an employee who shows up for work every single day. So, any comments you would like to make to them?
I just want to congratulate y'all. I hope you've got to go to the dentist and doctor. Sometimes, maybe early admittance in the morning, or late admittance. I hope you got to go to the necessary doctor and dental appointments, but I congratulate you. That is quite an accomplishment, and this is probably the first time that Misty and Dylan were absent. But congratulations again.
Ms. Stacy?
I would like to congratulate you. And if I heard correct, were three from N.H. Jones and one from Madison Street?
I think that's right.
I think so. We probably should have a little conversation with you about what was so great at Madison Street and N.H. Jones and Fort McCoy that really got you up and moving every day? What motivated you there? And what were the special things about the school, because it set such a foundation for you? And it says a lot about those schools, because, and something that I believe about those schools is that they do have special programs, they have additional programs, they have additional music and arts and sciences and different things to attract our students to those schools, and possibly get something we really need to, we're going to be talking more about that as time goes along. And the taxpayers have allowed us to add some art and music and some things, and I really believe that when children go to school, to hold their attention, those extra programs during the day really, really help. And I just, you know, I just bless you. Thank you so much, and you're right. It's, I'm a businesswoman, and you would be on the top of my list to hire.
Ms. Stacy, it's all about the parents. Because I know when they're in elementary school, it's the mommies and daddies that get them going, and they might have been more self-motivated when they got into high school, but I know the mommies and daddies were the ones. So thank you, parents, for getting your children up and running every day, even if they weren't quite ready to go that day. Thank you.
It helps if the children aren't kicking and screaming and fighting and fussing, that they don't want to go. And, so, you know, I'm just, I'm just going to give it to you. Thank you.
Mr. James, and then Ms. King.
First of all, I remember you in your youth. Y'all may not remember me, but it's good to Ms. Ross, because I thank you, parents. At one time, we worked together when y'all, and they were walking around with you guys at the schools and things like that. So being the product of the education system with the education parents and knowing how important education is, is a direct reflection on the two teachers that we have, educators that's out there. And to the young lady in the middle, I missed you on my tour of duty. But I'd just like to say, if you come to school, work hard and behave, good things will happen. And this is a classic example of what we talk about when you come to school. Good things will happen, and they are already happening because you came to school. And I want to congratulate the parents, too, because I know as a teacher, and you have kids in school, you can't get away with everything. Just like you can't get away with a senior skip day, because they know about it. So the seniors, when I think in terms of the fact that you guys came to school on senior skip day, and I'm wondering, did y'all come to school because your parents was there and they would have known that y'all were skipping school? It's one of those things where it's always a pleasure for me to talk about kids that come to school, work hard, and behave. Good things do happen, and that's where I am. And I just want to congratulate you on that. And parents, y'all came to school and worked hard, too. Good things did happen. Thank you.
Well, congratulations. It's funny that you said maybe they don't remember you. Well, I didn't remember Chandler until I heard his name, but actually, he went to school with my daughter at Howard Middle, Allison, and he's like, see, he don't even remember. But I recognized the name, and I just want to say, job well done, guys. And I know this skill, I would say, that you have shown, you're going to carry on throughout your, the rest of your college academics and your professions that you choose, and that says a lot about your character. So congratulations.
Thank you, Ms. King. Mr. Superintendent, do you have anything to say?
Contrary to what one of our board members says, these students and their parents recognize, there is no such thing as senior skip day. Congratulations to all three of you.
What about you, Mr. Lake? Would you like to say anything?
Students, I just want to congratulate you, and the qualities that you have and you instilled in you from going to school those 12 years, keep that, because it's so essential in the workforce. And Mr. Lake and I were talking about when I went to school, and I could count how many days I missed, you know? So when you reminisce back, and I can look out and see one of your parents, we went to school together, and so we were like, oh, we did miss some school, you know? But to see it in our youth, and to see the qualities you have, and it's incredible to me that you have such dedication. So keep it up, and thank you, parents, also, for the job well done. Thank you so much.
Before they take their seats, I'm going to ask everyone to stand, and I'll ask these students to help lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Maybe I've got a parent out there that would like to serve on the parent committee on how to get kids to come to school.
Mr. Superintendent?
Board members, with the exception of items C-24, J.D. 15-111, and J.D. 15-113, under item S.D. 68, which have been withdrawn entirely, I recommend approval of the agenda for the June 23, 2015 school board meeting with the materials in the board packet, those materials distributed to board members at the meeting, the audio recording and DVD included as part of the official record of the meeting.
May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation? I need a motion and a second, please.
Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. King and promptly seconded by Mrs. Ely. Is there any discussion? Okay, call a question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. And the motion passes 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for May 22, 2015, the administrative briefing and work session, May 26, 2015, school board meeting? I need a motion and a second, please.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Ely and seconded by Mr. James. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Any discussion? Call a question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Individuals who have completed the appropriate form prior to 5:40 PM will now have the opportunity to address the board. Before you begin your presentation, it is required that you state your name and address for the record. Additionally, please spell your last name. Matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsion, will be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of this meeting. Parents wishing to address the board regarding a discipline matter will have the opportunity to do so at that time. I will now ask the school board's attorney to explain some additional points.
Mr. Lake?
Thank you, Ms. Boynton. If you plan to address the school board tonight, you need to be aware of the school board procedures. Copies of those procedures are available from Mr. Christian or from one of the front tables. Under the school board's procedures, audiovisual presentations are permitted, if provided, at least 48 hours prior to the meeting to the school board's assistant. AV presentations are limited to a total of five minutes. Use of any student's name except by his or her parents or guardian, or identifying references to or identification of other students and their families is strictly prohibited. Based on time considerations, school board by majority vote may rightfully limit the number of presentations on any one topic, shorten the presentation time, move public comment time to a different position on the agenda, or eliminate the public comment time altogether. Ms. Boynton?
Thank you. Madam Secretary, do we have any speakers tonight?
We have no speakers this evening.
I beg your pardon, the hearing.
No speakers.
No speakers. Okay, moving along, board. May I have a motion to adopt the revised Resolution 15-04, District School Board Member Residence Areas? May I have a motion and a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. James and seconded by Mrs. Ely. Mr. Superintendent?
Board members, this resolution aligns the school board member residence areas with the numbering scheme implemented by the Marion County Supervisor of Elections Office in association with the 2010 census. The revised numbering system includes precinct adjustments and additions to reflect population changes.
Thank you. I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address Resolution 15-04? Is there any discussion, board? Thank you. Hearing no questions, I call a question. All those in favor of adopting the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And the motion carries 5-0. Board, may I have a motion to adopt the 2015-2016 Code of Student Conduct? I need a motion and a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. James and seconded by Mr. Ely. Mr. Tomlin?
Seconded by Mrs. King, I believe.
I can second it, too, if you want.
Board members, the Code of Student Conduct is updated annually as required by statute. The proposed Code of Student Conduct has been reviewed by board members at several work sessions and modified according to consensus received at these work sessions.
I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address the Code of Student Conduct? Board, is there any discussion?
I'd just like to make a comment.
Ms. Stacy?
I'd like to explain why I do not support the Code of Conduct. A change was made in the Code of Conduct for students with alcohol violations. It completely jumped from a 10-day suspension to an expulsion if they gave alcohol. And I know alcohol is illegal, but smoking's illegal also. You know, and I understand drugs are illegal, and that's, they're always illegal, but alcoholism, it's in so many homes, and probably 60 or 70% of the homes, it's there, and cigarettes might be the same, and both are illegal for children. But I just feel that, like, when prom time comes and stuff, what I, I guess what my comments are about tonight is, we've already spoke, we've already given consensus that the policy will pass, you know, at a previous workshop, and so that the booklets could be printed, we needed to do that, and I did not support it. My concern is that, are these children that we're teaching, or are we just building up our prisons and putting children, setting children up for failure? These are children, and they see their parents drinking, and they see their grandparents drinking, they see sometimes their teachers in the neighborhood drinking, and they just don't, it's not the same as taking drugs in their world, and they are children. And I guess what I would like to ask my fellow board members to consider, possibly, on the announcements during football season, the morning announcements and that sort of thing, to remind the students that the, they're supposed to read the Code of Conduct, and I don't know how many pages, 50 or 60 or 70, I don't know how many pages the Code of Conduct is, but for the children to sit and read it, first of all, 50% of our 10th graders aren't even proficient in reading, unfortunately, but they, if our high schools particularly, and even our middle schools, maybe a couple of times during football season, on the announcements would remind them that you will be expelled if you supply alcohol for a friend, even at a football game parking lot. And at prom, really make sure the students, over the morning announcements, understand the seriousness, that it is not like it used to be when their brothers were there, and that they just got a 10-day suspension, but that they will be expelled, because I hate to see students clowning around, and they're in their limousine going to the prom, and some jerk takes out his bottle that he pulled out of his daddy's cabinet or something, and starts serving drinks around, because then he provided, and I would hate to see him get expelled just before he graduates high school, because these are children, and we are teaching them. And to do, to have the child suddenly understand that it's not the way it was when his brother was in school, just kind of, we're assuming that they're adults, and they understand things, and they're kids. So I'd just like to ask the board if we can have some conversations about that, possibly with the high schools and the elementary schools, just reminding the kids of something that's that serious, that they are warned, because these are children.
Thank you, Ms. Stacy. And Ms. Ely?
I would like to encourage teachers and parents, teachers especially, when the Code of Student Conduct brochures are passed out at first week of school, please, maybe language arts teachers, go over that Code of Student Conduct with them to the level that the kids can understand, because if you don't, they might never open that book. Mom and Dad, I want you to open the book with them, but if you don't, we need to make sure that this message and information gets to our kids. From 3rd grade on, I believe that the children would understand it, but they're not going to sit down and read that like they'd read one of their favorite AR books. So please, teachers and parents, go through that book with them, and if you have any questions, call your school's principal. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Ely. Any more discussion, board?
Yeah. First of all, I'd like to commend the staff that worked on that and all the people that took part in that, because you worked real hard to make this thing very palatable and for people to work together. No matter what we say or do, there's always going to be an exception to the rule, but I appreciate the group trying to be consistent with what we were doing with this, and as a member of the Student Code of Conduct, I know how hard they worked to try and make this thing work, and I want to commend the board for going over this thing about four or five times to make sure that we have this information in there. And the thing I will say to you more than anything else, no matter what we say or do, somebody's not going to read it. Okay, so be inconsistent.
They wouldn't agree with me.
They wouldn't listen, some of them. You got one or two will not. So I want to be consistent with everybody and just thank them for that, and for the committee that really put this thing together and worked with us to make sure we did the best job that we could do at the present time. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. James. Ms. King, do you have anything you want to say? Okay. All right, is there any more discussion? All right, call a question. All those in favor of passing the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign.
Nay.
And the motion passes 4 to 1. Board, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item C-24, which has been entirely withdrawn from the agenda, and item C-11, which has been placed on the regular agenda for discussion? May I have a motion and a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. James and seconded by Mrs. Ely. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And the motion passes 5-0. May I have a motion to schedule a public hearing to be held at the July 28, 2015, regarding a new board policy, 6.131-Contracts for Employee Services? I have a motion and a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. James and seconded by Mrs. King. Mrs. Stacy, you threw this item.
Yes, I did. In reading over this item, and I've had a couple of calls on it, that they were asking me, I was asked by the public, what is this all about? Nowhere in this policy does it say what it's all about. I don't know whether it's to keep the public from knowing, or if it's just inadvertently, but this is done for one reason. This is to be able to hire employees who have dropped, and it is against state, the intent of the state statute, that when employees join the drop program, that they understand that in five years they're leaving, this makes a spot for a new upcoming person. Supposedly, I guess, to bring salaries down, you know, to hire salaried people retire out, that it saves money in the schools and that sort of thing, you know? So that was what it was originally done for. But I'm concerned that nowhere on this policy does it say, basically, it is an end around the drop program. And another thing that concerns me about this policy is that it starts out saying that the superintendent determines whether there's a crisis, and then he nominates someone to be in this. Nowhere in this policy does it say that the school board will have the final say. It just says the superintendent determines this. And it's really more like the superintendent's attorney wrote it than the school board attorney wrote it, because I don't believe that the school board's protected in any way with this policy. Even if it may be Mr. Tomlin retired and we had a new superintendent, this policy would stand. And I feel that it needs to, we need to have verbiage in there that says, where it says the superintendent makes this decision, it's very, very clear the way it abruptly starts out, and that, I mean, he nominates all kinds of employees to be, like principals and different things, the nominating committee does, and then he makes that recommendation. We have to have a very, very good reason to go against his recommendation, and my concern with this policy, which is what we tried to get to, would be that the school board would be able to say, no, we don't really believe this is a critical need, but nowhere in this policy does it say we have any say whatsoever. And as far as create an emergency, we can always create a critical need, and this policy just puts gasoline on that floodgate, where if you're an employee and you're an administrator, and you decide, well, if I don't cross-train people, you know, it sounds like you're ready to retire. Five years later, you get there and you go, really, things aren't financially where I had hoped they would be, you know? And it sets someone up to not cross-train to get ready for retirement, and then all of a sudden, they're gone, and, oh my goodness, the sky's going to fall if we don't bring them back. And it ends up being, and I believe everyone's critical. Our bus drivers are critical, our teachers are critical, our typists are critical, but somehow the administrator becomes critical, and we've had five years to plan this, even Mrs. Boston Ellis, for her, when she retires at five years, we should be able to have someone to step right in her shoes, or we have not been, we have not been leaders and managers, we've just gone by crisis management, just wait until the five years is up, and let's everybody just have a fit and wonder what we're going to do to fill that spot. We should be cross-training people, we should be running this the way we should be running it, we shouldn't have a crisis to develop that we have a critical need that takes a year to fill. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stacy. Board, let me remind you that procedurally, this is just a motion to move forward this policy, to schedule it for a public hearing. We've had many workshops on the discussion, and formally, the board will tonight- Uh, we've had many workshops on the discussion, and formally, the board will tonight only be taking action to vote to put to schedule this for a public hearing on July twenty-eighth. Um, I just wanted to remind you of that.
Right, but what I'm saying is I want the public to know what this is really about. This is not for just contracts for hiring people. This is set up for one reason. Cameraland, this is set up as an end around the state statute. And that's what this is set up for.
Ms. Ely.
Um, at the state, state school board conference, which you did not attend, there was a big session on temporary employment, and if you want to get that information, it tells how other counties deal with this, um, and they're all dealing with the same situation we are. Also, I found out that um, that teachers who are in the drop program, anybody in drop, they're eligible to, to get three more years, um, certain requirements, but um, everybody in the state is facing this, it isn't just Marion County, so um, I encourage you to look up and see what we did at the school board conference.
And Ms., Mrs. Stacy, go ahead.
Mrs. Boynton, the State School Board Association, you can go online and you can read exactly what they talked about. This is, this seems to be a movement to get around the state statute, and before they, before we started doing this, we managed to get by without this, and this is the very reason I don't go to the State School Board Association meetings, it's a complete waste of a thousand dollars, in my opinion, and I can get everything I need to know off of their website, and I'll go to their website and, and read. Um, it's, in fact, if you were at the State School Board Association, Mrs. Ely, and you spoke to the board members in Alachua, as I spoke to them, not at the State School Board Association meeting, I found out that they can't, they stopped doing this. They did this longer than anybody else, just about, they've done it like ten years. They stopped doing it this year because of the, every reason that I'm saying I'm opposed to.
Let me remind you what we're here for tonight. We're here to mo, procedurally, by vote, move this forward, not, we've, we've had many, many workshops discussing um this policy. We had our school board attorney uh also draft this policy, and this is a policy that we, that if voted by the board to move forward, can move forward, and we'll have a public hearing. The, the discussion we're having tonight is the same thing we've been discussing at every workshop, and um, I just want us to make sure that we use our time wisely tonight, but also we can say our, have our opinions, but, but remember that the discussions that we're having tonight is basically whether or not we should move this forward, to schedule it for a public hearing. Did you have anything, Mr. James?
I just want to make sure that, that we understand now, when we attended this, and I'm, I'm will move, I'm going to call a question in a minute, that we move it to a public hearing, but we had several districts that had temporary employment op, uh, opportunity, uh, temporary employment opportunities, and this is what this is about here. And when we get to the public hearing, then we can bring up the fact that we had more than just Alachua and St. John County actually led the discussion, so there was more to it than just a telephone call and things like that. There was an actual uh opportunity for, for us to engage and ask questions about what is occurring. So this is why I will move uh the question, to the question, so we can go ahead and move on.
Question has been called. Board, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, like sign. And the motion passes four to one. Board, may I have a motion to approve the following donations? One thousand five hundred dollars to community technical education, adult education from the American Endowment Foundation. Five thousand dollars to Dunellen High School from Dunellen High School Baseball Booster Incorporated. One thousand dollars to Dunellen Middle School for Best of Show from the two thousand and fifteen Student Media Festival via the school board of Marion County. Six thousand seven hundred dollars to Forest High School from Ford Lincoln of Ocala Exposure Marketing and Promotion Incorporated. One thousand and one hundred dollars to Forest High School from Bart Blessin Management LLC. Four thousand and ninety-seven dollars and fifty-three cents to Harborview Elementary School from the Public Education Foundation for the Mini Grant Dolphin Kids Network. One thousand dollars to twenty, to, to Twenty-First Century Community Learning Center grant at Horizon Academy at Marion Oaks from the Florida State Alliance of YMCA's Incorporated via federal programs. One thousand dollars to Legora High School from the Red Sox Nation. Seven thousand three hundred dollars to Madison Street Academy from Madison Street Academy PTA. Two pickup trucks valued at four thousand two hundred and fifty dollars to Marion Technical Institute from the Marion County Board of County Commissioners. One thousand dollars to North Marion High School from the Marion Soil and Water Conservation. Two thousand five hundred dollars to South Ocala Elementary School from their business partner, St. Leo University via the Public Education Foundation. I need a motion and a second, please.
Standby.
It's been moved by Mrs. King and seconded by Mr. James. Is there any discussion? All right, I call a question. All those in favor of the, the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And the motion carries five to zero. Mrs. Ely, would you do us the honor tonight of um thanking our donors?
Certainly, it's, it's just so great to have such community support, not just from the Parent Teacher Association, but our foundation and our um local people. Actually, this week, um Marion County, the county commission donated two trucks, so it's good that you all see the need, the big needs that our schools have. In total, um, we, you're donating thirty-six thousand four hundred and forty-seven dollars and fifty-three cents this school board meeting to our schools. Thank you so much for your support, and we hope and pray that you will continue to support our schools and be cognizant of the many needs that we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ely. Thank you so much. Board, let me uh give you a few reminders. A student hearing is scheduled for tomorrow, June twenty-fourth, at nine thirty A M. The next administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for Thursday, June twenty-fifth, two thousand and fifteen, at nine A M. The purpose of the work session is to review award recommendations for the two thousand and sixteen Health Insurance R F P and petition request to rename stadium at Dunellen High School, as well as receive an update on future school sites. A joint meeting of the city council and school board is scheduled for June thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen, at five thirty P M. in the extension office at the Life Science Pavilion. The purpose of the joint meeting is to, is to discuss the ongoing stormwater issues. The July fourteenth, two thousand and fifteen school board meeting is canceled to allow for vacations. There is only one administrative briefing and work session in July, and it is scheduled for July the twenty-third, two thousand and fifteen. The purpose of this work session is to receive an update on the, on the strategic plan, Go Five Student Services, which will include attendance, trueness, and discipline data. There will be a special board meeting at eleven o'clock on Thursday, July twenty-third, two thousand and fifteen. The purpose of this special meeting is to, is to receive the two thousand and fifteen to sixteen tentative budget and approve the tentative budget for advertising purposes only, and schedule a public hearing on the tentative mileage and tentative budget for two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen to be held at the July twenty-eighth school board meeting. At this time, board members are going to ask if each, any of you have any concerns, reports, or comments. I'll start with you, Mrs. Stacy.
Don't have a thing?
Mrs. King?
Uh, I would just like to comment that a couple of weekends ago, we went to Flag Day, and the elementary students gave the perspective on what the American flag means to them, and it was a hot day, but I bet you there was over a hundred people there. I think they said they put out a hundred and fifty chairs and probably had to put out more, but um, I, I don't know if they're all filled, but that was nice to see, and it was exciting. Um, also, I know we keep talking about retirement and drop, so I wonder if maybe we could, in the future, have a work session, and maybe they could provide us with some numbers of what it looks like for um employees that are currently in drop, you know, what are we looking at a year from now, two years from now, so that way maybe we can plan for this and have a little insight, and so we're not waiting, you know, for the emergency, but if we see it and we can plan for it, hopefully we can avoid um having to use this program, but we, you know, that's, that's all I have for today.
Oh, I just, first of all, I want to thank all the people that called me in reference to my family illness and things, I want to thank you guys for uh sharing your, your best wishes to me. One of the things I'd just like to just share with you, we did have a summer workshop down in, in Tampa, and it, really, it was really a good workshop. We had now an opportunity to net with our, network with our colleagues, uh, we had an opportunity to talk with the people in Orange County, people in uh Seminole County and Volusia, and we talked about various things. Some of the things that we talk about at our, at our level, at our, in our districts, are actually things that they, that they talk about as well. I know we talked about temporary employees, and we had an, an excellent opportunity to sit with all those people that were, had similar situations, that were dealing with the drop and dealing with uh hiring uh emergency personnel. And the thing that I would like to say, no matter what we got out of that conference, out of that particular session, it came back to the board. And when they said, uh, when we start, somebody asked a question, is it the superintendent's fault for doing it, or is it our fault for letting him do it? And this is one of the things that, uh, that I got from that, that whole session, is that when we had all those people around that were looking for ways in which they, to manage crises at their school district, they did have something in play. And I think all of us recognize that, that all the people in all the counties that were sitting there recognized the need for that, and that was the beauty of that. But not one of the counties abdicated their authority in terms of, of approving contracts and things like that. So that was one of the most beautiful things that we've seen. I did get a chance to, and maybe you guys have already talked about this, y'all had an opportunity to go into uh some charter schools, the charter school session to get information on that, and, and that worked out really well, because we're looking at the trends in charter schools and what is actually occurring, and some of the districts that are being, um, that are, have an unusual amount of charter schools, they were there, and they brought some valuable information to us and how uh they're working together to make these things work. So it's not one of those things where, and I want all of us to understand, it is an opportunity for us to really sit there and really talk about what is actually occurring in, in education. I was very pleased to see the, the deputy superintendent in our, Alachua County now is the chancellor of education for Marion County, I mean, I'm sorry, for the state of Florida, and he, and he's familiar with what we do. So when I, I get a chance to go down here and sit and talk with the, uh, these folks about what is actually occurring and the direction that we're going in education, I think this is so important. And again, I want to especially thank my board members, because we, we had it all, guys, we were there, we had an opportunity to sit and talk with other board members as a collective group. You know, when Orange County had all four or five of their board members there, we had all four hours there, and it was just a good feeling, guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. James. Mrs. Ely. Well, I just wanted to reiterate my appreciation of the, appreciation of the great graduation ceremonies that our principals conducted. Um, I was so honored to shake hands with all of these students, and um, as hot as those graduation ceremonies were, it was beautiful, and I'm so honored to be part of that. Um, I'm also excited to hear of all of the scholarship money that has been given to Marion County students in addition to what was given at the Evening of Excellence, and Mr. Tomlin, you sent us an email, what, what total did you give us for scholarships? Was that from you?
No, it's from John McGowan, but I have that information, I'll share that in just a minute.
Okay, but I just can't believe we've gotten that much money for our kids. I wanted to encourage our students and parents, please don't let your kids do the electronic thing all summer, limit that, the number of hours or the hour or two that they can do it, have them read books, have them go outside, we're not, this is not electronic summer, they need to read, they need to, they need to do some stuff with their brain in, in the way of reading, and it can be on a tablet, but um they can't be doing this all summer, so please, parents, get those kids reading. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ely. Mr. Blake, do you have anything you want to say?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mrs. Boynton. A few items for the board's attention. Uh, you know, we have a very active summer school and some numbers for you, we're in our, in our second week, our third week, actually. We have a hundred and twenty students attending extended school year, these are special education students that are continuing with their I E P. over the summer. Seventy-one students in our voluntary kindergarten program. Four hundred and four third grade students in our third grade reading camp. We have over six hundred and fifty students participating in our STEM Con, which is our grant-funded program for science, technology, engineering, and math, that's elementary, uh, credit, elementary for students. Uh, we have over six hundred middle school and high school students in credit recovery right now, they're doing this at our Plato Labs, and in the first two weeks, it's kind of an interesting, we like to keep track, they've earned, already earned two hundred and nine different credits or units, so they can be promoted to the next grade. We have a hundred and forty-one students in our driver ed. program for the first semester and an equal number coming the second, third week period of time. A hundred and sixty-seven students in our Algebra One Boot Camp, preparing for the Algebra One end of course exam. And an astounding number, we have eight hundred and sixty students who continue to be in our year-round virtual education program, either with Marion Virtual or Florida Virtual. And I want to shout out for that particular group right now, and Paul Vowinkle and his teachers. Here in Marion County, as you know, we have a Marion Virtual School, which is a franchise of Florida Virtual School, and a recent state meeting, Marion County was named the small franchise of the year. Uh, quite, quite an accomplishment for that, for that, for that group, and we're, again, serving a great number of students. On another note, you already know about this, but this week, our community technical adult education is coordinating a military training exercise. Uh, there are five hundred and twenty United States Army reservists, little article in the newspaper today, thank you, Ocala Star Banner. Uh, this is C T A E. coordinated, curriculum and instructors and oversight by C T A E. and the administrative staff there, in coordination with the State Fire College, in coordination with the city of Ocala, who owns the property that we are renting at the Airport Commerce Park. It's a great event for our community, all of these soldiers are eating in our restaurants, staying in our hotels, and it's absolutely a win-win for our community. You've received an invitation, if you want to, to go to the Fire College at eight o'clock on this Thursday evening to see the beginning of one of their all-night activities. You don't have to stay all night if you don't want to. You know this week that our, and last weekend, our legislators met in a special session, and I've asked Teresa to prepare a statement for you, we shared this at, at our work session, and we have a little bit more news today. The special session of the Florida Legislature adjourned on Friday, uh, June nineteenth. The budget for the two thousand and fifteen sixteen was passed and then sent to the governor, and this morning, Governor Scott signed the budget, however, not before vetoing approximately five hundred million dollars of projects. As we know right now, none of those projects directly affect Marion County public schools and very few impact K twelve education. The two thousand and fifteen sixteen K twelve budget is touted by the state, it's the highest level of funding in Florida history. The budget represents an average, let's think about that word, an average increase of three percent for our Florida school districts, whereas other areas of the government received an approximate two percent increase. In Marion County, we have been appropriated approximately two point one four percent increase in state and local funding. That's an average allocation of six thousand eight hundred and thirty-one dollars per student, which is still, still below the six thousand eight hundred and forty-six dollars allocated in the two thousand and seven, eight school year, so we're still eight years we have not back up to that funding level. The additional funding is based on a combination, as you know, of both state and local funding. We're pleased with the overall increase. We have been encouraged, and I need to emphasize this, a great deal, by our lobbyists and our advisors to be very cautious in our two thousand and fifteen sixteen spending due to the many unresolved issues that will reappear in the sixteen seventeen legislative session, and we know that legislative session begins in January. We'll continue to work through the whole budget process, as you know, throughout the summer with you, and bring to you a very conservative, conservative budget. Mrs. Ely mentioned a moment ago about our senior class scholarships, uh, we'll start off and then end by congratulating the class of two thousand and fifteen of our seven comprehensive high schools. Uh, I've asked for our guidance and testing department to compile some information, and they've also collected some information from our schools. We have- We have 78 Florida Bright Futures Gold Seal Scholars, that's the third tier. We have 99 Florida Bright Futures Medallion Scholars, 193 Bright Futures Academic Scholars, which is the highest award by them. Now, if you combine the dollars that those scholarships from our state, if you combine those, that those scholarships offer, with all the other individual and private scholarships from colleges and universities and from our local groups, the Gator Club, I have to say that, of course, as you know, Mrs. Ely. A combination of those is over $21 million of scholarship opportunities for the graduating class of 2015, the Marion County public schools. I think that's an outstanding accomplishment, so congratulations to those graduates this year, and I know they'll use those scholarships funds wisely. Thank you, that's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. I wanna thank Mrs., Mr. James.
I'd just like to ask the superintendent, do we have any more information on the Levy County situation there?
On the Levy County?
Yeah, the, the bus situation there.
The bus situation with Levy County, well, only, well, I did announce this last week, and you weren't here, that's correct. We are going to be taking the bus about halfway between Dunellen and, and actually Ingles to the recreation park in there and do a turnaround there. Mr. Hastings will permit his students to get to that point. We'll have a turnaround there, pick up students there, and also pick up any students in Levy County that wish to come to Dunellen High School that reside between there and, and Dunellen proper. Students, of course, in the Levy County area will still be permitted to enroll in Dunellen High School, but they'll have to provide their own transportation to that bus area or, or all the way to Dunellen High School.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I wanna thank Mrs. King for representing us at the Flag Day event. I know many of the board members were attending other events, so I wanna thank you for, on our behalf. I wanna say on Monday, I had attended a webinar from the State Department of Education, and it was on the VAM score, and there was nothing new. And although I think that I just learned a little bit, and there were a lot of attendees on it, I just wanna say, when the next one comes, it would be good for more board members to attend or to, you know, just keep up with whatever they're saying in Tallahassee on that VAM score. But the information didn't change from what was presented in Tampa at the conference. And I do wanna thank all the board members for attending the conference, because we know it was, it was rewarding for us, because when we can sit in, I think the way they did it this time, when we had the workshops, when we were all able to communicate, it was such a good thing, you know? I, I, I wanted to say that when I, I know Mr. James is always saying, we're always at the top, and when we looked at risk management, I'll say this again, when they did that presentation on risk management, all I could say was, way to go, Lori Lively. Way to go, Mr. Superintendent, because our district is, are doing those things. We're there. And when you can go to a workshop and know that your district is leading the way, I know the pride should be there, so. Yeah, it was, it was really, to me, was very rewarding. But thank you each, each again for attending. And I just wanted to remind you that those, those forms that we have to have in by July the 1st are due. The, I think it's the ethics forms and all that? Yes. So remember that. At this, at this time, the chair will recognize the board attorney, Mr. Stephen Lake.
Board members, on behalf of attorney Gary Sanders with the law firm of Vice Col, I'm notifying you that advice is needed regarding the pending litigation style of Francis Stifft, plaintiff versus Marion County School Board, and Celeste Culbert, defendant. Pursuant to Section 286, Decimal 011, Subsection 8, Florida statutes, I've requested a session with the board for the sole purpose of discussing settlement negotiations and strategy in regard to this litigation. I've asked the board secretary to cause reasonable public notice of the time and date of this session and the names of the persons attending to be published. As required by the statute, only the superintendent or designated board members and legal counsel can be present. I've asked a court reporter to record the session, as is also required by the statute. The court reporter's notes will be fully transcribed and filed with Brenda Flotketter as clerk of the school board. Upon the conclusion of the litigation, the transcript will be made public record.
Thank you, Mr. Lake. We acknowledge your request. The terms appear to be in compliance with Florida statutes. Board members, you have heard our attorney's request. As chair, I announce an attorney-client session. The statute states that I also must announce the commencement of the session, the estimated length of the time of the session, and the names of the persons attending. The session will commence as soon as the room is cleared, and the court reporter is set up following a five-minute recess to clear the room. It will last approximately one half hour. The names of the persons attending are Angie Boynton, Carol Ely, Bobby James, Kelly King, Nancy Stacy, Superintendent George Tomlin, Attorney Gary Sanders, and School Board Attorney Stephen Lake. After dealing with student disciplinary matters, I will declare a brief recess to be followed by an attorney-client session. Before addressing expulsions, I wish to acknowledge that board members have received the alternative placement list for students through June 5th, 2015. Are there any parents in the audience who wish to speak on behalf of a student regarding a disciplinary matter? May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of student JD-15-104, JD-15-108E, JD-15-109, JD-154-110, JD-15-112, JD-15-114, JD-15-115, and JD-15-116 with educational services through the 2015 school year? I need a motion and a second, please.
Stand by.
Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Ely and seconded by Mr. James. Is there any discussion? All right, I call the question. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. And the motion passes five to zero. The business and televised portion of the meeting is hereby concluded at 6:27, and the meeting, and the meeting is recessed to prepare for the attorney-client session. Thank you.